All right, this time I'll call this regularly scheduled meeting of the Harlem City Commission, which is nearly close to go on, and I'll call upon Mr. Yulhorn to lead us in an invitation.
Please join me in prayer. Almighty God, you are our Creator and our Sustainer. You are our light and our fortress. You are our wisdom and our strength. We ask for your guiding hand to lead us through this meeting. May we approach our task on behalf of our entire community with wisdom, and may we all approach one another with respect. May our conduct create an environment of cooperation and kindness. Thank you for helping us to accomplish our work this day. We ask these things in your powerful name. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Our pledge is to survive in the United States of America and to serve in all of the unfortunate events, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we want to welcome everybody to our meeting tonight. We're really glad to have you here. And we're going to begin with some board recognitions. Item 1, people that we want to recognize. The first one is Gary Rounds. Gary, we've come on the board, we'll recognize you for your commitment to serve on our Parks and Recreation Board. All right. All right, thank you. It's a great place. Mayor, please. Yep. And that was Arnold Gomez, who's raised to serve on our convention and business bureau. And we're going to be a very busy advisory board here, so we appreciate your service and your great service. Thank you.
One more.
Item 2 is proclamations, and the first one that we have is proclamation for drinking water weed. And we'd like to have Water Works folks come up here and talk to you from here. And it's John Goblin, Tom Kim, I got the history of the chat. And Yuldes, come up here and...
Everybody.
Whereas waters are most valuable natural resource, whereas only tap water delivers public health protection, bioprotection, can work for our economy and hopefully likely do it. Whereas many measures should be society, low mortality rates, economic growth and diversity, productivity, public health, in some way related to access to safe water. Whereas we're all spirits of the water infrastructure upon which future generations depend, whereas each citizen of Harlem City can call upon to help protect our source of water from pollution, to practice waste conservation, and to get involved in local water issues by getting to know their water. Now therefore, it is resolved that by virtue of the authorities vested in the knee as mayor of our city, I hereby proclaim that we can make six free crockets drinking water weed and do hereby proclaim that if we can ask all citizens to recognize and to serve that. And this is one of those things that people think for granted. There is people that they expect that water to come out of the tap, but it takes dedicated men and women working for our city 24/7, 365 days a year to make that happen. And it does contribute to our health and our longer life and having safe drinking water and safe waste water solutions. And so we wanted to congratulate, and I want to thank, they practice what they preach. If you go to their board meeting, there's not, no bottle of water for you to drink. If you want some water, you pour it in the gas, but you're going to get, Arnold, you don't have water. That's not much to believe in their products, so congratulations. And done. All right, thank you. All right. Our next proclamation is elder abuse proclamation. We'd like to, the representatives, Kamala Salinas, Ramallo Garza, Manoel Perez, Yesus, Monica Giro, Juan Zepeda, Ana Bela, and you, everybody else with your screw. Come on up here, position yourself if you can be, if you want to take your picture. Whereas people who are elderly and have disabilities have contributed to the general welfare of the Harlem City community by healthy preserve of customs, convictions, and traditions that may change first backgrounds. And whereas these residents are vital and integral members of society, their wisdom and experience have enriched our lives, whereas abuse of the elderly and people with disabilities in domestic and institutional setting is a widespread problem affecting hundreds of thousands of people across the country. And whereas in 2017, there were 84,712 completed cases of elderly and disabled persons abused in Texas, and wish 1,051,314 were confirmed. And whereas elder abuse is personally under reported, because the elderly or being abused find it very difficult to tell anyone, and are usually ashamed and sometimes afraid. Whereas elder abuse happens to men and women of all income levels, on cultural and ethnic groups, whether they are in good health or incapacitated in some way, or in poor neighborhoods or in suburbia. And whereas many of the cases investigated by adult protective services affected and involved self neglect, and it is our duty as citizens to reach out to people in need. Now therefore, I, Chris Boswell, mayor of the city of Harlem, hereby proclaim the month of May 2018 to be elder abuse prevention month in Harlem, and I urge all citizens to work together to help produce abuse and neglect of people who are elderly or have disabilities. So I want to present this to you all and congratulate you all, and thank you for the work that you do in our community to address this important problem. I don't think we can say anything about it. Thank you.
To the people of Harlem, and the seniors, and you're recognizing adult protective and elder abuse, thank you very much.
Okay, this is one we look forward to every year, and that's the motorcycle safety and awareness. We're trying to provide, provide connected to Robert King and others to come forward and, you know, and recognize you all in this, in this court issue. Whereas today's society is finding more citizens involved in motorcycling on the roads of our country, and whereas motorcyclists are roughly unprotected and much more likely to be injured or killed in a crash than other vehicle drivers. We're in campaigns that help inform riders and motorists alike of motorcycle safety issues to reduce motorcycle-related risks, injuries, and most of all fatalities through a comprehensive approach to motorcycle safety. And whereas it is the responsibility of all who put themselves behind the wheel to become aware of motorcyclists regarding them with the same impact as any other vehicle traveling the highway in this country. And whereas urging the Harlem City community to become more aware of the inherent danger involved in operation of motorcycle, and to give the operator respect on the road they deserve. Now therefore, I, Chris Boswell, mayor of the city of Harlem, hereby proclaim the month of May 2018, the Harlem City, Texas Motorcycle Awareness Safety Week. And we present this to you, in the making for bringing this issue to our attention and helping us to make people aware and think about motorcycle safety.
Just, just remember, a motorcycle's a lot smaller than the cage you're driving around in. The signs on expressways say look twice. That's because if you, you look over here where we're coming from, and we're a little bit away, you're not going to see us. You look back, you don't look back again, you'll probably miss us. But we appreciate all the help and we appreciate your support.
Okay, thank you. One more. And our last proclamation, National Public Works Week, so we're going to have, well, we're going to have for that National Public Works Week, come on up. And our city staff, we're connected with building our infrastructure and our... Everybody come on up here and stand in front of our City of Harlem banner. We got the audience ready to have all of you here, and we do recognize. Do you think this is after hours or no? All right, this is great, this is a great proclamation. I'm really, really happy that we could do this. Whereas public works services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives. And whereas the support of understanding and importance of citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public works systems and programs such as drainage, streets and highways, public buildings, solid waste collection. And whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction are vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public works officials. Whereas the efficiency of qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of work they perform. Now therefore, I, Chris Boswell, mayor of the city of Harlem, Texas, on behalf of the city of Harlem, extend our sincere congratulations for this extraordinary service and dedication to the Harlem City community, and extend our very best wishes for continued success and proclaim the week of May 20th through 27th, 2018, the National and Public Works Week. I call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contribution which public works officials and other staff make every day for our health, safety, comfort, quality of life. So just like we were talking about water business, a lot of that is always taken for granted by the community and just expect that's going to happen. You need to realize that it takes dedicated individuals like the people who are standing before us today to make that happen, to make sure our roads are passable, to make sure that our buildings are usable for our community and for our neighbors, and for all the things that, that, all the things that we just don't even think about, that have to be done to keep our city running smoothly. We want to recognize you for the tremendous service that you give to our community and to our public. So thank you very much, and let's get rolling.
I'd like to say that it's been an honor and serve alongside them. They're very committed, very dedicated, and they really care for the city, and it shows when they're out there. So thank you, and thank you, Mayor.
Okay, well, let's, we should... All right, thank you all. Okay, item 3 is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of April 4 of 2018. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing now, is there a motion to approve minutes as presented?
So moved, second.
All who favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed, like sign, motion carries. 4A through E is a motion to adopt consent agendas or move further. Is consent agendas a motion to adopt consent agenda?
So moved, second.
All who favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item 5 is presentation by Carrick and Ingram, CPAs and advisors regarding the City of Harlem Conference's annual financial report for fiscal year 2016, etc. Quentin Anderson and company, come on up.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the commission. We have worked with your finance personnel and city administration to prepare an annual financial report for presentation to the city and to the Government Finance Officers Association. We met with management and reviewed the report. We met with the Audit Committee of the city, which includes several members, and reviewed the report as well, and recommendations that we had for improvements and controls. And I'm here to give you a quick overview of information that's included in the annual financial report. And obviously, it's a, I think you have the report in your packet. You should have this slide presentation as well, and I'll use it as a basis for a quick presentation of some financial highlights for, for today. Again, we worked with, with your finance department in designing our test and rendering our opinion on these financial statements. I think one thing I want to point out to you, you're accustomed to receiving a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting, and you have received that certificate historically and for the past year. You've also prepared this report for submission to the GFOA. I think this certificate is a hats off to the administration and finance personnel who go above and beyond the minimum requirements in financial reporting to prepare a financial statement that includes a lot of comprehensive information and statistics about the city so that, you know, the, an ordinary user can take the first part of the statements and get a quick overview of the city, and then sophisticated users, including your bond counsel and other advisors, can take the detailed statistical information and have an assessment of the city. What you'll find in the report is the basic financial statements, which includes a financial position and a statement of activities, which revenues and expenses, as well as various fine level financial statements. But the comprehensive report includes information about the primary government, that's the city of Harlem, your governmental activities, which would be police, fire, public works, services, administration, and business-type activities. The city has, has golf course, municipal auditorium, museum, sanitation, a lot of things that public works takes care of for us, right? And then also included in the report, because it's comprehensive, are, are four discreetly presented component units. This, this report includes the Harlem Economic Development Corporation, the Community Improvement Board, Harlem Water Works System, and Valley International Airport. So there's information about all components of the city as well. We've issued two opinions on the, on, in this report. If you were flipping through your big boundary report, you go to page 15, and in that, in that section of the report, there's an opinion on the financial statements. And that opinion says that after conducting our audit procedures, we believe the financial statements fairly present the financial position and the activities for the city for the past fiscal year, and it does so in accordance with, with the generally accepted accounting principles for governmental entities. In addition to the opinion on the financial statements, because you're the recipient of some significant federal grant awards, because you're a governmental entity, we've issued a report back on page 297 that talks about compliance with, with your major federal program requirements. And that report indicates that we believe you complied in all material respects with the, with the requirements that would have a direct and material effect on the city's compliance. So that would be an unmodified report as well. And so we reviewed each of those reports with the Audit Committee and with administration. Here's some of the financial highlights. If you had in your boundary report, you flip over to page 24, you, you get a little bit more detailed information in management's discussion and analysis. But this is a comparison for the past four years of, of the city's assets and liabilities and net position. And, and net position at the end of the fiscal period, about $106 million. And this is the combined presentation for the primary government. It doesn't include the component units, but for the primary government, governmental activities and business-type activities, you've got nearly $105 million in net position, $204 million in overall assets at the end of the fiscal period, about $98 million in liabilities. One, one thing, if you looked into the notes to the financial statements, one of the primary events that took place during the year was the issuance of about $12 million in debt for the, for the convention center. That's part of the changes in long-term liabilities, and that's included in the financial statements. In terms of revenues, we presented comparative information for governmental activities and business-type activities for the past several years. And revenues have grown from $48 million in 2016 to $52 million in governmental activities during the past year. And business-type activities also revenue grew from $10 to $11, $11 million. And there's, there's some detailed information on page 25 in your boundary report that breaks down the reasons why and the causes of those changes. We're also, if you can squint and look close, this is a breakdown of, like, the $52 million we just saw in governmental activities, this is a breakdown of the major categories, major sources of revenue. Of course, property taxes, I think that's grown from $18.1 million, $18.3 million, a little bit of growth in property tax revenues, you know, without much changes in, in the rate. So sales tax revenues grew by over $1 million. Franchise fees grew as well. And so, you know, there was an increase of about $3 million in overall revenues compared to the $49 million we had in revenues the year before for governmental activities. You go to your detail in page 25 and 36 and 37 in your annual financial report, there's, there's detailed information on each of those revenue categories and some information about those changes. The business-type activities, again, what those represent, the lion's share of business-type activities for the city are sanitation services. And then we have the golf course and the museum and municipal auditorium, but most of what's included in business-type activities, this light blue section of the bar, is sanitation services. And that is, that's nearly $10, $10 million in terms of overall, all revenues compared to $11 million in total revenues in those categories. And page 44, you'll find detailed information on that. This is a breakdown on how we spend our money, how the city spent the money in their past fiscal year for governmental activities. Again, this, this is the city and not the component units. And for 2017, similar to 2016, the biggest piece of our pie goes to public safety. 57% of the budget is for, during the past year, were expenditures for public safety, about 54% the year before. So, and, and you've got, you can see your other major categories, highways and streets, about 14% this year, and general government is about 12%, the red part of the chart. So that's, that's a breakdown of where the city's funds went in, in terms of categories. Business-type activities, again, this chart's not real meaningful because what it represents is sanitation is the biggest part of the business-type activities for, for the city. So sanitation expenditures were $7.3 million, 80% of all those expenses in 2017, and $7.1 million, about 78% in, in 2016. And then maybe one, one more important chart that we, that we prepared is a, is a running recap of where your fund balance has gone as far as the general fund. And so on page 38 and in pages 266 and 267, back in the statistical section, there's some detailed information about changes in, in fund balance. And the fund balance for, for the general fund has grown from $11 million back in 2008 to $18.5 million in 2017. What that represents is, claims about 150 days of reserves and operations at the end of the fiscal period, and of course, things have changed since then, but the city's general fund balance was, was $18.5 million at, at the end of the fiscal period. There's a tremendous amount of detailed disclosures within this financial report. There's comparative schedules of all the funds that the city accounts for and all the activities that the city participates in. There's detailed footnotes on, on, on capital assets and long-term debt and pension plan disclosures, and so that's what makes the report comprehensive. It's required a lot of effort on the part of city personnel to put this report together, and that's a quick overview of financial position for the city.
All right, thank you, thank you for that report. Anybody have any questions for Quentin? I think this is another positive review. Appreciate the work that you have done to make sure that we're moving in the right direction to grade our work and congratulate our finance department and all of our departments, albeit starting, you know, everyone, our city manager, for the fine work that they've done and being able to get us to have a good report like this at the end of the year. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, item 6 is public hearing to consider an ordinance on the first reading authorizing the closing, vacating, and transferring and abandonment of a 0.189 acre tract of land being an unopened 60-foot road right-of-way within the original credit union subdivision located at St. Brown's in Austin Avenue, West Loop 49, Colonel Ford Boulevard, and authorize the mayor to execute and quickly de- authorize or, and relieve, and or release of right-of-way conveyed to the RGV credit union.
Mayor, members of the commission, there's a letter in your packet dated February 7th from Dustin Moore on behalf of Royal Grand Valley Credit Union asking for the easement in question, which is, whoops, sorry, which is that area right in there to be abandoned by the city. As part of the request on April 16, we published letters in the paper, Valley Morning Star, letting property owners know that we'd be having this public hearing today. The easement is 60-foot right-of-way. It is not accessible to the city because it's in the middle of the property. We checked with our thoroughfare plan, and we have no immediate plans to conduct any street improvements in this area. So in essence, this right-of-way here is an island unto itself because we cannot access it from the road or any other easement that we have. So engineering looked at the request, and we agreed that the easement should be abandoned. As part of the amendment process, it would go back to the original property owner. They would just have to replat the deed to make that happen. They are planning on expanding the apartment complexes that are back here, which is why they want the right-of-way abandoned so they can replat that entire area. Staff is recommending approval of the ordinance, so be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Originally, there was a planned street, though, at some point?
No.
Why would they put the 60-foot right-of-way?
We, we have not been able to answer that question, Commissioner. We looked for answers, we couldn't find one. We did look at our thoroughfare plan, and it calls for nothing to be there. And there are housing units on either side of this right-of-way that would prohibit a road to be constructed there.
I could see that there was no need for it, I just wondered how it got there.
We're not sure, Commissioner. It just got, it may have, we're not sure.
Anybody have any other questions for Dave? All right, we have an item 8, we're hoping a public hearing. Is there anyone who'd like to speak for or against this ordinance, closing, vacating, and abandoning right-of-way? Hearing now, all clauses of public hearing, got item 8, it's a consideration, possible extra approval or a first read, authorize the closing, vacating, transferring, and abandonment of the 0.189 acre tract of land being an unopened 60-foot road right-of-way within the root of credit union subdivision located at St. Brown's, Austin Avenue, West Loop 49, authorize the mayor to execute a quick land deed and a release right-of-way conveyed to the RGV credit union. Let's see, attorney, read the caption, please.
An ordinance by the city commissioner for the city of Harlem in Texas, abandoning a street right-of-way located at the credit union subdivision and establishing an effective date hereof.
So a motion about the ordinance?
So moved, second.